All right. Good evening, all. I'd like to welcome you to the Village of Payless Park Council Meeting of June twenty seven, two thousand twenty-two. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Present.
Commissioner Polk?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Mayor Mahoney?
Here. Thank you. Uh, let's all stand at the refleting allegiance. My pleads allegiance to the law, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, if you have to get back this this evening, uh, the thread of minutes from our previous meeting, uh, may come on third. Questions, comments, or suggestions, otherwise I would seek motion to approve the minutes at this time. So, second. Bring a motion in second. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yeah.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. All right, I am going to, uh, stand by the flags with my microphone down first, first of all. Oh, we have to make the appointment. We can do that. Okay. So, the first item or order of business this evening is to approve the appointment of Mike Wade as Commissioner for the Village of Payless Park. Mike is not standing. Candidate, uh, we are very pleased to, uh, have him considered here at this evening, this meeting. Uh, and I would like to adjoint in motion to approve his appointment. So moved?
Second.
Wait, we have a motion in a second. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, the motion carries. Congratulations, Mike Wade. Now, I'm gonna, uh, now I'm gonna do the logistics. Now it's time to do the logistics? Like, if you just... And we'll share the microphone. Hopefully, folks will hear us. Probably should go with this. If you raise your right hand, I, Mike Wade.
I, Mike Wade.
Having been appointed to the Office of Commissioner.
Having been appointed to the Office of Commissioner.
For the Village of Payless Park.
For the Village of Payless Park.
Cook County, Illinois.
Cook County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will hold and enforce the statutes of the state.
And will hold and enforce the statutes of the state.
Of Illinois.
Of Illinois.
And the resolutions and ordinances of the Village of Payless Park.
And the resolutions and ordinances of the Village of Payless Park.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
Discharge the duties of the Office of Commissioner.
And member of the Village Council.
And member of the Village Council.
Of the Village of Payless Park.
Of the Village of Payless Park.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bring up the... Welcome, Mike Wade. We appreciate you, long as it's a...
Thank you.
So, next item on our agenda is to approve the reappointment of Jennifer Yalberg, plus the Library Board expiring June first, two thousand twenty-six. Uh, the Library Board has asked us to reappoint Jennifer. She was appointed to the Library Board, uh, about two years ago, in November two thousand twenty, to complete the second half of the eight-year term. She is dedicated, we can't change this trustee, and her knowledge of finances is a great value to the Board and the Library Board. So I would entertain the motion to approve, uh, Jennifer Yalberg as a trustee of the Payless Park Library Board expiring June first, two thousand twenty-six.
I would love to know who I heard.
Second. Hearing a motion in a second. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are received or been brought forward at direction of the Commissioners and will be enacted with a motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda separately. Item A, mass resolution authorizing the Village Clerk to maintain certain clause-section limits available for public inspection, first reviewed two thousand twenty-two. The resolution states the Village has reviewed clause-section limits and determined that a new perconfidential entity still exists as the executive session in set order, as I see. Item B, approve the true value foundation RAPL license for Apple miniature product on June twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two. I cogitoled Country Club to support youth religious organizations. Item C, to ratify payment invoices on warrantless data June thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, in amount of two hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars and forty-eight cents. Item D, to ratify payment of resubway on warrantless data June thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, in amount of tax payroll and current order transfers in amount of five hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars and seven cents. Finally, uh, item E, to approve payment invoices, uh, payment of out invoices on warrantless data June twenty-seven, two thousand two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-six cents. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, the clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, the motion carries. I think this is gonna be brought before the council at this time. Mayor, you must say across. We're gonna move to board the Commissioner community recommendations. Uh, Commissioner Reed, um, you're going to be handling these text amendments.
That is Mayor Mahoney. Uh, thank you for your intelligence. Uh, let me start my comments by saying that, um, I have been advised that sometimes I don't speak English as understandable. Therefore, I will rely on either Mayor Mahoney or Community Development Director Herman to clean up when I mess up. An issue for your consideration this evening are two items, unless you approve ordinance two zero two two dash one five and ordinance in part twelve, title six, chapter twelve, twenty, section twelve, seven, zero dot zero six, part twelve, title six, chapter twelve, eighty, section twelve, with eighty, back o' eight, of the Payless Park with a code in regard to empty relevant floor area and second floor additions. And the ordinance states that the Village Council approves and adapts the findings and recommendations of the Plan Commission and incorporate said findings and recommendations. And then the sections include twelve, seven, oh, six, excuse me, twelve, seven, zero dot zero six, and twelve, eight, zero, eight. And the second that I would interest when I get to it. Um, let me start by saying originally the council had asked the Plan Commission to consider four text amendments at one of our prior meetings. They were twelve, seven, oh, dot zero, and these. Twelve, seven, four, dot zero, five, dot G. Twelve, seven, zero, on zero, six, F. Twelve, eight, zero, point zero, eight, and the one that I would address in the second session, fourteen, sixty-one, dot zero, one. Excuse me, I'll take a break. We want you to consider the first one and the shining of our page. Bear with me. As I mentioned on April twenty-fifth, we asked the Public Council to consider the text amendments that previously mentioned. The first one, twelve, seven, zero, dot zero, six, sub F. Is a limitation on the number of bedrooms and floor area in residential communities. Our current code has minimum requirements for floor area and the number of bedrooms. What I propose to them would be, in short, is to eliminate the regulations to the number of bedrooms and the minimum floor area applicable to our four and our five zone, zone sections of our code. As noted in your documents in the statute of law, there may be incited or proposal to add a second tier of technical standard which is nonconformal regarding applicable setback provisions. Our nonconformal provisions allow for second tier additions are nonconformal instruction in certain conditions. However, the clause section had been modified and modified, so the sections no longer applicable. The proposed amendment would allow second-tier additions to nonconformal by right, which is through the building process. For added, the second-tier addition is ten feet from more from any property drawn. To the extent a resident wants a second-tier addition that is ten feet or more from any property line, they will be required to seek interference. The Stat recommends approval of the proposed text amendments for part twelve, title six, chapter twelve, seven, section twelve, seventeen, point zero, six, and part twelve, title six, chapter twelve, eight, then twelve, eight, dot zero, eight, of the code in regard to empty dwelling floor area and second-tier additions. The Plan Commission needed to move it on May twelfth, held a public hearing, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero for the proposed text amendments. I move to approve. But not before I do that. Any other, if there are any questions or comments relative to anything that I've just said.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Did you hear that, Commissioner Reed? No questions or comments.
Hearing that, I move to approve ordinance two zero two two dash one five and ordinance in making part twelve, title six, chapter twelve, seven, section twelve, seventy, dot zero, six, and part twelve, title six, chapter twelve, eighty, section twelve, eight, zero, dot zero, eight, of the code in regard to empty dwelling floor area and second-tier additions.
Second. We have a motion in a second. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
Thank you. The next item relates to... Thank you. The next item relates to text amendment in section thirteen, sixty-one, dot zero, one, to eliminate a code that first that is no longer valid. Section fourteen, sixty-one, dot zero, one, cap of the code involved general permits for commercial development and work from succession of the eighty-two, dot ten, dot I regarding outdoor lighting requirements. Section twelve, eighty-two, dot ten, sub I no longer exists in the code and that recommending the code be admitted to the mode of this error. This section of the code is in the building accounting code which can be amended by the council without going to the Plan Commission. However, the Plan Commission did consider it at its May nineteen twenty-two meeting on an informal basis and concur with the recommendation of the Data that this section of the code be amended to remove the text amendment, the law, or excuse me, to remove the text that is no longer valid. Stat recommends approval for the proposed text amendment to part fourteen, title six, chapter fourteen, sixty-one, sub F of the code in regard to outdoor lighting. And I would seek... I would be seeking a motion out of acts of third and comments relative to what I've just said.
No.
Hearing that, I move to approve ordinance two twenty, twenty-two, twenty-two, dash one, six, and ordinance in making part fourteen, title six, chapter thirteen, sixty-one, sub F of the code in regard to outdoor lighting. I would seek a second.
We have a motion in a second. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, the motion carries.
And as a final note, when I started my conversation, I mentioned that there were five sections of the code that we had asked the Plan Commission to consider. It should build that the further council received it. Section twelve, seventy, dash, section twelve, seventy, quote, dot zero, five, sub section G and to do with the UDs were considered by the unconditioned power that no recommendations were forthcoming. Therefore, nothing is before the council for consideration this evening relative to those two sections of the code. And with that, I don't fix my sentence. I'm gonna proceed into this. Thank you, Mayor Mahoney.
Thank you, Commissioner. That leads us to information and updates. Public Works is free, recreation. Commissioner Melovich Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have a number of items, though. I'd like to move through them quickly. The first is regarding the replacement of the hydraulic system on our two thousand seven Caterpillar backhoe loader. The hydraulic system that controls the buckets on this backhoe loader must be replaced. The village can do the work in-house, but will need to purchase the parts from the local cap parts dealer, Al Togfer. The replacement parts for the pistons, hoses, couplings, and pins will cost twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. There was twenty-eight thousand dollars budgeted under equipment maintenance for this project. Does anybody have any questions regarding fixing the backhoe? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of parts from Al Togfer Cap to replace the hydraulic system on the two thousand seven cap backhoe loader in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
Thank you.
So, anyone have any questions regarding this? Uh, we have a motion in a second. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
The next item is regarding approving the proposal from Corin Maine for a new Brookside master meter. It was discovered late last year that the master meter for Brookside subdivision was not working properly. The existing meter is the original meter installed with the water main when the subdivision was built. The new meter will better read low and high flows. The meter quote, including fittings from Corin Maine, is nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, and there was money put in the two thousand twenty-three water fund budget to cover this cost. Does anybody have any questions? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Corin Maine in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for a new master meter for the water system in Brookside subdivision.
Second. Hearing a motion in a second. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
Uh, the next items are repairing the concrete floor in our Public Works garage. Uh, this concrete floor has been deteriorating due to salt dripping from the trucks after plowing and after washing the salt off the trucks to keep them from rusting. The village requested quotes from several contractors for the work, but we have received only two back. The prices include washing and degreasing the floor, grinding the floor, shot blasting the floor, applying a heavy-duty concrete repair subfloor to cover imperfections, applying epoxy base coat and top coat, and then a chemical-resistant urethane top coat. This work will take about a week to complete. During that time, Public Works will not be able to use the garage. The newly-coated floor will help prevent damage from salt drippings and any other chemicals that may fall to the floor. The two proposals were from Armored Floor from Naperville in the amount of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents, and White Rabbit from Lake Zurich in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. There was thirty-two thousand dollars put in the half percent sales tax fund for this work. Questions from anyone? I'd like to make a motion to waive the bidding process and approve the proposal from Armored Floors to repair the concrete floor in the Public Works garage in the amount of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Second. Uh, having a motion and a second. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
And my last agenda item is regarding the contract with Concentric Integration, formerly known as Baxter and Woodman Control Systems Integration, to maintain the SCADA, which is our supervisory control and data acquisition system for our water distribution system. In two thousand sixteen, the village entered into agreement with Baxter and Woodman Control Systems Integration, now Concentric Integration, to evaluate and perform maintenance on our SCADA control system at the reservoir and pump station. They provide twenty-four-seven service, whether onsite or by phone. They also provide remote monitoring of our system to help detect anomalies before they become problems. During the past year, they have responded promptly to our calls for service and begun to work with Public Works on long-term projects to upgrade the system. Public Works is seeking approval of a proposal from Concentric to provide support services for our water control system for the next fiscal year. The cost for the renewal is eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. This is a seventeen percent increase over the two thousand twenty-one contract price of seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. This cost will cut, will cover proactive and preventative maintenance, technology and SCADA planning and budgeting, project management, remote support and monitoring, and a maximum of sixty-minute response time for onsite help in the event of an emergency. The money to cover this contract is in the two thousand twenty-two water fund budget. Questions from anyone? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal for Concentric Integration in the amount of eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to provide support services for the SCADA system and computer that controls the village water system.
Second. So we have a motion in a second. The clerk, please call the hall.
Commissioner Melovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, the motion carries.
And now, just a couple of quick announcements. Um, last meeting, May twenty-third, the council approved a request from Public Works to purchase a new Ford F-550 chassis cab through the Suburban Joint Purchasing Cooperative. When we called to place our order, we were told even though the cutoff date was in July, they were not taking any more orders due to the manufacturing time and available parts and material. Public Works will return to the council for approval if and when alternatives are found. So hopefully, what we have will last until then. Um, also, on July eleventh, we will, the contractor hired by the village, uh, the name is Dukes, will begin smoke testing the sanitary sewer system in several areas. This testing is used to determine if there are any problems with the sewer that allow stormwater to infiltrate the sanitary sewer. The testing will be completed in the areas tributary to the following lift stations: Ransky, Cartridge, Romiga, and Ninety-first Street. The sewers in the three phases of the commons will also be tested. Further information will be forthcoming, but if you have any questions, seven oh eight, six seven one, three seven two one. And lastly, the fun stuff. Hot dog day. Yay. Uh, National Hot Dog Day, Thursday, July twenty-first, from five to seven thirty, out on the village green. Let's see, um, hot dogs will be two dollars each. If you want a meal that's hot dogs and a pop or water, that's four dollars. And we will have the musical guest Legacy, which is vintage rock and soul music. So don't miss out. Great event. Um, bring a chair, bring a blanket, come hang out, have some hot dogs. Hopefully, it'll all ring.
Hopefully, it'll be in daylight tonight.
Yes, it'll be perfect.
Absolutely.
And, uh, our own village manager will be out there hurling those hot dogs as usual. It'll be fantastic. So please come and join us Thursday, July twenty-first, five to seven thirty. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Building and public property. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. The building department has devoted hard labor to make sure that logs are being cut and maintained. Please keep your logs maintained. Chapter six, ninety-two, dot zero, two of the code whose property owners to cut high grass and weeds on their property. Breeds cannot exceed eight inches in height. If you are aware of a property that has become overgrown, please tell the building department at one seven eight, two seven one, three seven, three two. Just because you live in the service doesn't mean your lawn has to look like ours. The building department processed thirty-four permits from Mike Nate, seven, fifteen twenty-one, resulting in two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-two cents in progress. Twenty-eight special workers were taken to the form of some time period. Uh, Director Herman, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I do not. Thank you.
And thank you. And that, Mayor, thank you. Please, my court.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start with the police activity report from the period of May twenty-third to June twenty-sixth, year of our board, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we have four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two, uh, calls for service. Uh, we had, uh, eight, um, well, let me do it the other way around. We had forty-two adjudication tickets written for speeding and an additional eight, uh, that also went to adjudication. Uh, additional twenty-two traffic tickets, forty-five written warnings, warnings, forty verbal warnings, and additional twenty-nine case reports, twenty-eight accident reports, arrested three adults, no juveniles, and impounded two vehicles, sixteen senior checks, and additional thirty-eight citizen assists. So that's what the Payless Park Police Department's been up to. Then I have a couple of quick announcements. Uh, the first has to do with a, uh, community emergency response team class. So, uh, generally, in the, uh, in the trade, this is known as a CERT class, C-E-R-T. The Payless Park Police will be hosting a community emergency response team class, a twenty-hour basic course for village residents starting on Wednesday, September the seventh. I'll explain in a minute what the course is about and what CERT is about. The course is free and will be held on seventh Wednesday evening from seven P.M. to nine P.M. So again, the course starts September the seventh. It'll be on seven consecutive Wednesday evenings from seven P.M. to nine P.M. With a graduation predicted for Saturday, October twenty-ninth. Um, uh, the CERT program educates people about disaster preparedness that might impact their area, trains them in basic disaster response skills such as fire safety and extinguishment, uh, light search and rescue, team organization, disaster medical operations, including basic first aid. aid. So it's expected that using the training learned in the classroom during exercises, CERT members can assist others in the neighborhood or workplace following an event when professional responders are not immediately available to help. No experience is needed, that's why we're giving you the training, and you would become a volunteer Payless Park Police Department CERT member. It's applicable to all ages, however, the minimum age to participate is 18 years of age. If you're interested in registering for the CERT course, contact Officer Flores. He's our emergency preparedness coordinator. His email is F F Flores, F F L O R E S, at paylesspark.org. There's also information up on the village Payless Park website, as well as the Payless Park Police Department Facebook page. The class size is limited to 20, first come, first served, and registration will close the third weekend in August. So we've had members of the community ask about CERT training. We were somewhat derailed by a particular virus that's been circulating in the community, but we're pleased to say that the CERT training class is going to be up and running. So if you're interested, you can also contact me, D Polk, D P O L K, at paylesspark.org. Well, my email, my own personal email started that way, but it ends differently, so. All right. And then just a couple of quick announcements. The first has to do with Lexapro Risk Management Updates. Lexapro is a system that's staffed by legal and law enforcement professionals and monitors major court decisions, legislation, and other issues affecting law enforcement operations. We're currently in a transition to participate in the Lexapro Risk Management Services, which basically provide us to have comprehensive court-tested policies that are in conformation with both legal and law enforcement regulations and review by professionals. They're focused on officer safety, but particularly in the areas of risk management. They're constantly updated, which is the strength of the Lexapro system, as well as immediately available. So you may hear that word bandied about somewhere in the press or in social media, but that's what the Lexapro Risk Management System is all about. And then I just wanted briefly to make an update about the Payless Park Police Foundation. So the Payless Park Police Foundation was formed to support programs that aren't necessarily funded by the village. What does that mean? So the Payless Park Police Department gets their department salaries, their pension, their overtime, their equipment, their cars, et cetera, et cetera, from a budget line item in the village. But occasionally, something comes up, particularly these days when we have mandates coming from the state of Illinois about trainings and certifications that we just don't have the ability to be able to support. And the Payless Park Police Foundation steps in to cover the costs of many of those programs. The foundation is comprised of community members who share a common purpose and promote excellence in our police department, again, by helping to coordinate and provide resources that are not readily available from traditional sources. How does the Payless Park Police Foundation get funded? It gets funded by you. So it's a charitable, recognized organization, so one would get an appropriate tax deduction depending on what you do with your taxes if you were to contribute. We wanted to take a minute or two and just thank the members of the Payless Park Police Foundation, and they have their own website, so it's called thepaylessparkpolicefoundation.org, I believe. And if you're interested in more information about them, again, you can either contact me, or you can go to their website, and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And then finally, a week from today, for those of you not immediately adjacent to the calendar, is the Fourth of July. So I did want to offer a suggestion that the Payless Park Police Officers will be out with other law enforcement partners looking for, let's just say, impaired or aggressive drivers. So we've got special patrols planned for that weekend, as well as the Fourth, which happens on Monday this year, and looking for things like speeding and not obeying traffic signals and being on your phone and all those kind of good things. So again, if you are planning on traveling, waves to the Payless Park Police Department people who are working on the Independence Day album. Chief Miller, do you have anything you'd care to add?
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thank you for your service, sir, and that concludes my report.
I did have a question.
Oh, that was great.
A week from today, isn't that like Dan Holt Day, too?
Well, I'm sad to say, or admit, that I was 12 before I recognized that something else happened in the United States of America besides my birthday. So yes, I was born on the Fourth of July in 1954.
Happy birthday, since we won't be here.
Because it's my birthday, you won't be here, or?
No, because we'll be at your house more than here.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Come on by, there may be entertainment. That's not me. I'm done, guys, thanks.
Okay, so a council finances report, I'm gonna handle this, and we just have several items that were, two items that need to be continued to future meetings. Can I do these together, or do I have to do them separately?
The list is two separate, two separate.
Okay. So the first is to move to continue the consideration of the cash management investment policy to July 11th, 2022 council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, will the court please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Mayor Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Lieutenant.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Second, I almost moved to continue the consideration of investment management bringing per year asset management policy to the July 11th, 2022 council.
You'll make a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll second.
Bring a motion and a second, will the court please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Mayor's report. So I'd like to offer for your consideration commission appointments as follows. Accounts and finances, Chief General Reed, public health and safety, Dan Polk, streets and public improvements and recreation, Colan Milovich Walters, and public property and buildings. I could wait. Do I have a motion to approve the commission?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, will the court please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Clerk's report, do we have?
You got something you want to say?
Oh, no, I think I said that.
We'll give you the opportunity.
Senator Banning, do you want me to just continue this? So we just have, we'd like to move consideration of IT maintenance agreement to August 8th, 2022 council.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, will the court please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. I have a few announcements. So vehicle stickers must be displayed on July 1st. Finally, much reminder that 2022, 2023, both vehicles, motorcycle tags, drug tags must be purchased and displayed by July 1st. First reminder notices were available on May 18th. Please call the board with questions, 708-671-3700. Election Day, it's elections in June. Election Day for the Illinois primary is to file polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Order and election information can be found at H T T P S colon backslash backslash W W W. dot crock county furb I L dot gov backslash elections, or by calling the village clerk's office at 708-671-3706. Please help in determining our future votes. Outdoor recreation opportunities. Summer is a great time to enjoy outdoor recreation around the area. The Forest Reserve of Cro County has created a summer event guide.
I'd be happy to be a fan.
It contains information on hiking, boat rentals, camping, disc golf, sit mining, and many other activities to explore. These guides are mechanical, lobby, or a beautiful one from the college, or outdoor recreation.
I'd like to buy a wall?
Yes. Village Eaters. The Village now has over 800 people sign up for our weekly E-News. Everybody at the Village signs up. Most current listeners write you a inbox, sign up using your email across the Village website, or by calling Village. Weekly E-News can also be viewed on Village's Instagram and website, paylesspark.org. And that concludes my announcements, citizens and visitors, and period, and let the audience like to address the council at this time. No such requests.
I look.
I would seek motion to adjourn this meeting this time.
So moved. Second?
The motion is second, will the clerk please call?
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you all, and good evening.
Be safe.